Legions.
Walk me into it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This Tuesday, June 10th, for our regular meeting. First thing I need is any input on the agenda lineup before we approve it. Any public input? All right. If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Otten.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Alicia, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronson.
Yes.
Otten.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Putnam.
Yeah.
Landine.
Yes. The motion carries. Then we have our consent agenda. Any public input on the consent agenda lineup? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronson.
Yes.
Otten.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Putnam.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes. That motion carries. First item on our regular business agenda, we have the Coroner Budget Work Session.
Somebody roll that up. Yeah. That's all I got.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Snell, the Coroner for Lincoln County. So, as you know, what we do for a living cannot be really predicted, unfortunately. And that greatly affects our ability to do budgets. The budget that I submitted originally was based off three months. And it just so happened those three months were the worst three months we've had since I've been the coroner, starting back in 2018. Looking forward on that, it really put us way out there. So we did a little bit of playing with our numbers at that point. We actually took February versus March, two months versus three months, and kind of tried to go between the two of those. And as you can see, those numbers were very high still. Now, part of that effect was because of the transport, which we'd already talked about. That's something beyond our control. But now, what I did was I took and I said, "Okay, let's look at the first five months and see if things are any better." And looking at the first five months, numbers have come down more realistically. So instead of projecting out like 124 coroner calls, it's back down to what it was last year at 116. The number of autopsies really has not changed that much, 23 versus 22. Transports dropped from a projection of 76 to a projection of 60. So that, when you look at 16 and write out $1,000 apiece, that's a pretty big. So what we am proposing, and I sent this to Sherri, and I believe you have access to it, the proposed budget change to that, an alternative proposal. The call amount will stay the same as it was in the '25 budget, no change there. Do we have that? Yeah, this one. And you can see that the '25 budget, the '26 alternative proposal, which I'm submitting now, is about the same. So there's no change in that. Transports, I'm still having to go up because in '24, we only had 47 transports. Even projecting with five months now, we're still looking at 60 transports. So the number of transports are going up. Our number of storage, which means the family doesn't have a funeral home chosen, is projected to go up by seven. So again, seven in a thousand roughly dollars, that's 7,000. So the transport, I'm only proposing 60,800, that's still 113% increase. Now, remember, part of that increase is because of the increase in cost for transport over the previous years. Autopsy, I really added a few because if you look how many autopsies we did the previous year and versus what we're projecting this year, we are projecting more autopsies. 18 versus 22, that's four more. So that is part of that increase there. Of course, external exams are going up as well, but we don't charge for those. That's part of just the routine process there. So, yes, there is an increase over what I have in the past. Predominantly, this is due to increased number of bodies we're transporting and due to the increase in cost associated with transport that we haven't had in the past. So the overall budget increase being 33.6% is a big jump. I understand that. Unfortunately, there's not much I can do about the transport cost aspect of that. You know, there are alternative ways that we can approach the budget. You know, one is if we went back to having a local coroner here, based out of the county, instead of up at Sioux Falls, because that means all those bodies that we need to look at have to be brought to Sioux Falls. Whereas if there's a local coroner here, they could look at them here, and you wouldn't have that extra transport. Because like I said, if we're looking at 20 bodies coming up just for storage, and then if we're looking at 20 bodies for external exams, that's 40 bodies. That's $40,000. So that'd be a huge savings that you would not have if you had a coroner based in the county here that operated here. I mean, short of doing something like that, you know, the other alternative, and I know the sheriff's sitting back there, and I'm gonna surprise him with his comment, but I mean, if we were to take on the approach of, say, Brown County or Pendin County, where the sheriff and his deputies were the coroner, the 18,000 there for call would disappear, because you wouldn't have that. So I know, I'm just trying to come up with alternative ways to reduce the cost and budget crisis. I know he probably doesn't want that.
I'm getting some looks back there.
Yeah. You know, but again, it's kind of one of those, if we're in serious budget crunches, the only ways I can make changes is that, really, is to transfer that job that I do back to someone based in the county here, where all the routine, basic work's done in the county, instead of having to be brought up to Sioux Falls. That would be a savings. And it would be a substantial amount of savings, you know. Short of that, I mean, the alternative proposal I've given you with a total of 33.6% increase, I mean, I just don't have any way really to cut that. You know, Sanford has not changed our autopsy price in, what is it now, eight years? We've not changed that autopsy price. And my colleagues in other areas have increased theirs. So we're trying to keep that cost down, but the city's growing, the more cases have to be autopsied. So I'll open it up for questions to try to address with this, if I can.
Adam, Chair, I guess I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have a question? Does Lincoln County have an actual place to store bodies?
No. They never did. Prior to me, the local coroner who was a funeral home director would have stored them at his facility. There were three different funeral homes that served as coroner and deputy coroners, and so they would have stored them at their facilities in the meantime. Also, those deputy coroners and coroner would have done those external exams themselves, instead of sending them up to Sioux Falls. So that would have been a savings as well.
Now, you're out of Sioux Falls?
No, I'm in Sioux Falls at Sanford Hospital.
Okay, so what you're saying is we have like three mortuaries here.
Well, no, you have funeral homes that have, what they call a cold storage. I know at least one of them has a cooler. The others, I believe, they just have a cold room, not truly cooler. They're not designed for long-term storage. So, I mean, but then there is Dakota and Bombing Transport. They're based, I believe, in Harrisburg, and they have a massive cooler there. They could, and on occasions, if we know it's just for storage and Dakota picked up for us, we'll have them store at their facility until we can choose a funeral home. But that's a cost. I mean, they charge me for storing.
Yeah.
You know. So, I mean, the county could put in a cooler here, but in all honesty, I mean, you've still got that transport pickup, and then who's gonna monitor it?
Well, I guess I'm a little, you know, behind on things as far as like transporting and stuff like that. Who actually, is there a company that just does strictly transporting corpses?
Dakota and Bombing Transport, they cover Sioux Falls and bring up to us. Canton Ambulance covers Canton and Harrisburg. Lennox Ambulance covers Lennox and T. And they bring up. And of course, they all charge.
Yeah. So if every town in Lincoln County had a regular, not mortuaries there, then each town could take care of that with the minimum cost, then maybe?
Well, the question's gonna be is who's gonna monitor that? Who's gonna control the in and out of the bodies? And that's where your problem comes in, if you're gonna do that. And so again, what I would say is if you go back to having your coroner based in the county, and the coroner has a facility, they could manage those things. And that would save, again, you know, what I'm looking at.
I guess I don't understand quite the monitoring. You know, in other words, if I die and I'm by a T, and of course, I don't know where that would go, and, you know, they'd take my body to the closest place, you know. I don't know what monitoring would be, other than the fact that Doug's over at this funeral home.
Well, when I say monitoring, a couple of things. One is the cooler functioning. Because if a cooler goes bad and we put your body in there, most likely, the family's gonna sue because your body went bad and wasn't maintained properly. Two, wants to keep somebody from going in there and stealing your personal effects. Families are always trying to say that something went missing from the body.
Okay.
So, you know, that's why you have to have it monitored, one, to make sure it's functioning properly, and make sure, two, people don't steal stuff or steal the body. And so those are the things that you look at, that you have to have monitored. Being inside our hospital, we have security guards all over the hospital, so nobody can get to it. And then beyond that, the room that it's in is in a secure passcode. Only a set number of people have access through that door. Even the nurses in the hospital can't get in. I mean, you know, so it is monitored and controlled.
I guess I didn't realize it would be that complex, but...
Yeah, it is one of those things. I guess if you think of it the same as a prisoner, you have to monitor them, monitor the facility they're in, and all that stuff. We have to do the same sorts of things for those bodies that come in. And that means, basically, we're responsible for that individual, from a chain of custody standpoint, from all the personal effects. I mean, like, I'm wearing two rings, three rings right now and a necklace. If that disappeared, my wife could sue and say, "Hey, what'd you do with it?" And I've been involved in those, where things got misplaced and, you know, we have to account for them.
Have you ever had any bodies go missing?
Not a body go missing, but we have had bodies get released by accident. Where a funeral home came and picked up the wrong body, we found out within about 30 minutes and got the funeral home to bring it back. And the problem was, was that they were allowed to go in and pick the body up themselves without being monitored, and they just picked the wrong body up. They didn't read the paperwork correctly, and they picked the wrong body up and took off. So we've seen that happen. And that's actually, I know of at least two cases, not affecting me, but my friends that do this for a living, where the body actually got cremated. And now the family wants their body, and all they gets is a pile of ashes. And they're like, who are they gonna sue? They're gonna sue somebody. So those kind of things do happen on occasions.
Dr. Snell.
Okay, understandable.
Go ahead, Joel.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate your service. For those people who don't know, Dr. Snell is nationally recognized, pretty good coroner. You do a good job for us.
Thank you.
But one of the things you can't control is these cost increases. But I want to dig into this a little bit. But, so I got a couple of questions. Number one, how many of the autopsies are, I guess, what I would call criminal in nature versus, you know, not criminal?
I would say, so like, we've done so far this year, we've done nine autopsies. Out of that nine, I, two max are criminal.
Okay.
Now, the caveat when you say criminal is this. Criminal is determined whether or not the, our lawyers, our prosecutors decide to go forward. Because we can have a traffic, and they say, "Well, we're not gonna prosecute that. So therefore, one, we don't do an autopsy. We just look at the body, document the injuries." And they say, "No, we're gonna prosecute because we think somebody did something wrong." There is where that now becomes criminal. Same with drug overdoses. If we can figure out who sold them the drugs, that now becomes criminal. So when I say two, I'm thinking of like a homicide or something like that. That is not that whole spiel there.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm just trying to.
Oh, I understand.
shorten up the taxonomy here for, you know, the purposes of, you know, just trying to get down to the bottom of it. Like, so thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it. And I'm glad you're understanding what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Last year, what do you think the percentage was of, you know, what I would say is autopsies needed for the purpose of furthering the law enforcement process, as opposed to, you know, for example, whatever the other categories are. And frankly, I don't even know what the other categories are. And that's my next question is, if they're not law enforcement-related or not related to some kind of investigation, why is an autopsy happening, and why are we expending those funds to do it? And hopefully, you can kind of get into that here.
Yeah. So, and I apologize, I don't have the exact number breakdowns to discuss that. But what I would say is this, is one, if it is deemed criminal by law enforcement who's at the scene, and then we would do that. And then sometimes, they will, we've had a couple of cases where we're like, "Oh, there's nothing criminal this." And next thing we know, law enforcement's saying, "No, we talked to the state's attorney's office. The state's attorney's office wants an autopsy because they may go criminal." And that catches us off guard, because we weren't expecting that. I had a great example of that up in Sioux Falls last month. Traffic, the driver was at fault, but the prosecutor said, "No, I think I'm gonna prosecute the other guy because they were a distracted driver." Even though the driver of the car that died was at fault, clearly, because the other person was distracted, they're gonna do criminal charges. So that's a case we wouldn't have autopsied or anything like that. There was a case here, I can't remember if it was this year or last year, where had I been here, we would have done it here. But I was not here, so it had to go all the way to St. Paul, who covers for me when I'm not here, in those cases deemed to be criminal.
What's the other category, then?
So you have drug overdoses, is number one. We do autopsies on drug overdoses. Unless you had a natural death that could account for your death, then I can just simply draw a sample on you. If the tox comes back negative, I have a natural reason for you to die. You being a young, healthy individual, you have no reason to be dead. If we're suspecting drugs, we're gonna do an autopsy to make sure, because I've seen many cases where you do the tox, it comes back negative. Well, if I don't have an autopsy to figure out why you died, then you get signed out as undetermined. And we don't know why you died.
And then what do you think the next category is? So we got some law enforcement-related, we got some.
Suicides are the next one. Most suicides, we don't autopsy. The only ones we do are the drugs, again. So there's that category. The only other case really that we are autopsying is infants. So if an infant dies or a young child dies, we do those, because you never know when that could be a homicide. I've had many cases come in, as well, they were in their crib, found dead, it's probably a crib death, turns out it's a homicide.
Right.
So that is that approach. The one category that is sitting out there is the obvious natural. Technically, by state law, as the coroner, I do not have the authority to order an autopsy on a, what appears to be is a clear-cut natural.
And we have resolved this issue with that one institution that I won't name that was.
Yeah, we have fewer calls.
Unfortunately, increasing cost to the county. That's been resolved now, right?
Well, we still get some calls, but not very many. That's greatly diminished.
What does that mean, though, not very many, like one or 10?
Well, like, I've probably gotten.
What percentage of our budget are we spending on that?
In the first five months of this year, I've probably gotten three calls.
Okay. So, because I think what I want to know is what percentage of county property taxpayer money is going to this institution that is requesting these, but doesn't need them under state law?
Well, they don't get any of the money.
Yeah, I get that part.
Yeah. I would have to go back and look to be able to give you a hard number on the change.
Because what I'm, here's what I'm trying to isolate. If we don't need to do them, we shouldn't be spending property taxpayer money on it. And so I want to know if that institution is still demanding or inserting itself into our budget when it otherwise doesn't need to. Because they need to stop.
Yeah, I mean, what I can do is go back and look at the cases they've called us on and give you that kind of information for this year's to date. I just don't have it. I do give a complete call log, all of our calls, and it tells who called. To Ms. Lund, each month. So she has that data as well, but I could look at that data. And we could look at that and say, "Okay, you know, which case is this? In which cases are we getting called on that is clearly natural, but you're calling us?" I mean, we could look at that number.
And then after this institution requests that and they get it, do they get a copy of the report as well, then?
Well, yeah, right. We're talking about two different things now. They can't request an autopsy.
Well, I mean, they're making a call.
They're just simply creating a call, which is.
They're doing something to trigger this process, right?
Well, they have a death. They're calling the coroner, saying, "We've got a death." If we look at it and say, one, it's not a coroner's case, there's a $150 charge to the county from my office, nothing else.
All right.
If it is a coroner's case, we then decide, "Do we need to do an autopsy or not?" That is me and my staff making that decision, not the institution.
Okay.
If we, the only way they get a copy of the report is if it is a traumatic death. And that is simply what we do for any hospital. It's a traumatic death for their quality assurance. We give it to them for quality assurance, for no other reason. I do that for every hospital that.
Do they reimburse us for the $150 fee that they trigger?
No. No hospital does.
Okay. Next question then. And thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it. But shifting over to, all of your increases look normal and natural, except for one, and that's this transport.
Correct.
So the transport has increased by 36,100. It's basically doubled.
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, if a normal person is looking at this budget, and they're like, "Holy crap, the budget for next year has gone from 28.5 to 64.6," where is that money going? And who is collecting that money? Who are we giving that money to? And why is it doubled in cost?
The company that was doing it basically turned in a notice saying they weren't gonna transport anymore. Therefore, we had to go out and find a new transport company. We met with all the local funeral homes. They all declined to take on that role. So then it became, okay, who will do this? Dakota and Bombing Transport stepped up. They offered a solution. They offered a proposal as to cost. And Minniac County worked with them and reached an agreement with them. So then the question became, that's Minniac County. What are we gonna do in this county? We had already gotten Canton Ambulance, Lennox Ambulance, to agree to step into the Harrisburg and T areas to help with those areas. So the only thing left is Sioux Falls, Lincoln County. We could not find anyone else to step up and take that region for Lincoln County. Dakota and Bombing agreed to step up and do that. And they took that on as part of what they're charging Minniac County, same rates. One caveat is that at this moment, he is not charging Lincoln County a on-call fee, because he has to pay individuals to be on-call, sitting around waiting to get in a vehicle and come. We require him to have two individuals. We also require him that if it's hazmat, he has to go in and do it, which the previous transporter was insisting the fire come and do that removal. So there's a lot of that. Again, he's a private entity. He can set his rate. I mean, you know. And we worked with him to get the rate that we have at this moment. I have talked to him. I've talked to a lot of law enforcement. And everybody seems to be happy with the service we're getting from that company. So the question becomes, is there an alternative for transport in Sioux Falls, Lincoln County, other than him? I'd say, if you've got one, let me know, because we went through this extensively. We talked with the sheriff on that, trying to come up with alternatives. Honestly, and he'll tell you, I tried to pressure him to get a van and do it, pretty much like him taking over as the coroner. That was a no-go. You know, so that's our problem, is that we went from an ambulance service doing it to a private entity.
And the ambulance service up in Sioux Falls, which I understand is different than the volunteer ambulance service you see here, they won't, they won't or can't or don't, or that's not an alternative up there?
So, the company we had was not the Sioux Falls Ambulance Service. We did reach out to the ambulance service in Sioux Falls, and they declined.
Okay.
We asked them, and they said, "No."
Okay.
And so it's kind of like, okay. And like I said, we tried a bunch of different alternatives. We did put out requests for bids. I can't think of the terminology for that, but requests for bids. And we had some people that were thinking about submitting bids and everything, but they were one individual, one vehicle, and that's it. Well, the requirement is you have to have two individuals, 365 days, 24 hours a day. And if it's a heavy individual, you have to have a third person to come. That really pretty much squished two other alternative bids that were in the background, because they couldn't meet that requirement.
So, long story short, because of the marketplace, because there's only one provider, that's the reason for the double increase?
Correct.
Thank you. Got it.
Any other questions for Dr. Snell? All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Doctor.
Sure. And like I said, I mean, you know, there are alternatives, but it would put pressure on other parts of the county to change, you know. And so, and Mr. Aaronson, one thing, too, we talked, you was talking about a little bit about the criminal cases and what cases were autopsying.
Yeah.
When we first took over back in 18, for the first six months, every case that potentially was getting an autopsy, I personally called and talked with Mr. Wolman. After six months of doing that, he said, "Quit calling me." He goes, "You're operating just as I would expect you to operate. You're not doing cases that don't need to be autopsied." So, you know, we worked real hard when we first took over, because that was a concern of the commission back then, was would Sanford just start doing all kinds of autopsies that needs to drive money? And so we reached that agreement. And like I said, after six months of seeing what we were doing, they were like, "Yeah, you're not doing anything that doesn't have to be done." And it's the same principles that I teach when I teach other coroners, new coroners. It's the same principles. These are the cases you need to do, these you don't have to do. Same principles with those. So that's just a little background, you know, as to that, to try to keep those numbers down.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the work you've done. I appreciate those comments. And I know your budget has stayed relatively in line, you know, I think with what taxpayers are looking for. I think just that explanation with why the one category doubled was definitely. And then, you know, I appreciate the work you've done on getting that one institution to get that under control as well.
Yeah.
Maybe there's still a little bit of effort there, but we're making progress with them.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Y'all have a good one.
Thanks, Doctor. Is there any public input on the presentation? All right. If not, thanks for coming. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning.
All right. Forgot what's going on here. Okay, so on the sheriff's budget, it's an overall 2%, or 2.82% decrease, but the main thing is we bought six vehicles last year versus five this year. So most of, I think, what I'm supposed to be discussing today is the vehicles. Last year, we purchased six. We are surplusing two of those of the state's attorney's office. That's why we had one more last year. But it's a pretty simple equation. We drove 514,490 miles in the last 12 months. And to keep the rotation at 100, 120,000 miles, that's just 500,000 miles equals five vehicles. So I don't really have a better explanation than that. And then the, I'm also asking for three FTEs, which are deputy positions, and that's mainly because of the increase in the Harrisburg contract. And the Harrisburg population doesn't take into account for the overall increase of population in Sioux Falls, T, just Lincoln County in general. So we didn't add any FTEs last year for the sheriff's office. So that's some simple answers there. Any questions on the FTEs? Any questions on the FTEs and the cars for the sheriff's office, I guess?
Anybody have any questions for the sheriff?
Steve, how many total vehicles do we have now in the sheriff's department?
The printer cut it off here. And then we'll start surplusing these. Two of them are going to the state's attorney's office, and then we'll surplus three this year. So it keeps it about that 34 range.
Keeps it at about the same. And if a couple of those are, what, probably van, two vans?
One is a van.
For sure.
Actually, two are vans, then we have two other, so there's five vehicles in the jail division total. And then there's one that's a 2001 Chevy pickup that we use as a, for the investigators to go out, it's just, I'm giving it up now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So are, I mean, so are we trying, like, does every patrol deputy have a vehicle? Are they able to take it home so that they can just easily clock in and clock out? And then what kind of impact does that have on, you know, recruiting and retention of deputies? Can you kind of talk through all that?
Yes, so, so what we do is, the deputies that live in Lincoln County, however, to be full disclosure here, I'm going to change that policy because the city of Sioux Falls and the Miniat County are doing the same thing. We're in a startup radius that these guys that live a mile into Sioux Falls, that they can, they can take their patrol car home. And what happens is, so they work four 10s. So one deputy will drive it four days, and then the deputy that's, works opposite, and they, there's a vehicle that we need, a second vehicle, because one day is an overlap, and that, there's, so two deputies share a vehicle. Sergeants, captains, myself, chief deputy, we all have a take-home car, which is issued to us. So that's five, six, seven, eight of us. So eight of them are issued to one individual. The rest are shared. The jail staff, also the captain, of course, he has a vehicle, and then the jail sergeant who lives in Sioux Falls reports, goes to the jail most mornings, so it's, it just makes sense for her to have a vehicle there. So it's, it's, we have a tight rotation, like right now we have a blown engine on a vehicle, and it's, so we have to have a couple spares, so to speak, but, but they're good use, but the, one thing that Lincoln County Sheriff's Office has the reputation of is having good equipment, good vehicles, and it is, it is brought up in interviews. So I think it's, I think it's a positive that we have good equipment, you know, when I first got here, it was a little touch and go. So I don't think we're, we're definitely not over, overdoing it on the vehicles, but we do have good equipment, and it, that's, it requires it for the work that they do.
Well, in some depart, well, some departments you have to drive your own POV in and.
Right. And we do have the, currently the people that don't live in Lincoln County, and some of them are just blocks, they drive to Harrisburg, which is where we store our, the city of Harrisburg lets us use their city lot, so we store them there, but they'll drive their personal vehicle in, which is not ideal, because if we call them out, it's, it's, you know, they're.
Right.
So it would, ideal, it'd be best that everyone have their own vehicle, that's the way the Highway Patrol did it, and it worked phenomenal, and it is a great tool. You know, the Highway Patrol right now is doing a hiring advertisement, and they're, the trooper's getting his boots on, and it's his best part about this job is to commute, and he walks out of his driveway and he goes to work. And it's a big deal in this, in this environment, it's, it's really, we've been trying to hire one deputy for almost a year now, and we just, it's, it's just a tough environment. So anything we can do seems, and this is not a big thing in, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah. And then with regard to the FTEs, just so the public is clear, those are being hired on as a result of the Harrisburg contract, right?
Right. And honestly, we should probably add more, but the three that I'm asking for is covered by the increase in the Harrisburg contract.
Yeah, and maybe that's where you and I would have some disagreement, because, you know, if there's population growth within a city, ostensibly, it's the city, and I'm talking about Sioux Falls, we have police officers being hired on to take care of crime within city limits.
Right.
But for people who don't know, we cover Harrisburg through a contract.
Correct.
And then we also cover Hudson, we do a little bit down there, don't we? Or do we just?
Yeah, we, we cover pretty much every city in Lincoln County, just, we're just the sole source of law enforcement in Harrisburg. But Hudson, there's not a contract there, but we, we cover the calls in Hudson.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, unfortunately, they probably don't have the budget to fund, and the calls are, are limited, but it's, it's a big county when you're trying to, you're spread out, and.
And then T has its own police department, and is it Worthing? T and?
Worthing has a part-time police department.
Okay. All right.
But, you know, that we back them up, they back us up. It's, it's a.
Yeah.
It's a team effort.
Steve?
Yep.
Do we ever, do you ever major response time? Like, when a call comes in?
You know, I, I haven't done that, although that, I think that would be a good, some good data, and I think we could do that with our CAD system, but I would say we have a very good response.
I've always heard that we've had one of the best.
Yep.
That the time lapse is very short comparison to other counties. So I just wondered if you had, anyway, that's been the general perception that I've heard, so.
I'd say we have one of the best in the business, but I would, I'll definitely pull that data if I can figure it out in the CAD system, how to do that, because we.
I have another question. On, on highways that are frequently traveled by a certain commissioner, why are there more patrols on those particular streets right now than before?
Well, they have a picture of the commissioner and the car, so, and there's a reward.
Isn't there like a perpetual BOLO out for that commissioner?
I've noticed that lately, and I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that has caused some consternation.
Just change the speed limit.
Steve, just one other question. This, it doesn't go towards this year, but I, it may go towards outline uses. With regard to all this technology for the CAD system, and especially, you know, we're all kind of focused on, kind of for today, the patrol budget, but what a lot of people don't see is, there's a lot of money that gets sunk into the technology that we have here in the courthouse and, you know, other places for our dispatch and some of that.
Right.
In fact, you could argue that's substantial money. Is there, I mean, are you looking at in future outline years needing upgrades to any of that? And do we need to start, like, putting money away a little bit by a little bit each year in order to, I, you know, kind of insulate ourselves against like a wild increase in some outline year? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, and I don't mean to, I'm just trying to get some kind of, you know, guesstimation right now.
Right. So, so our CAD system is, it's, if we were to have to get a new CAD system or go to a different system, which we've looked into, would cost probably a million dollars. It currently costs, I'm, and I'm just going to ballpark this, with sheriff's office, the jail, and dispatch, and this, this is the computer that the deputies have in the car, the dispatch has, and they communicate with each other, that's, that's how we communicate, license plates, calls for service, et cetera. That's about $100,000 a year over the three budget, over the three budgets. So it's an expensive operation to begin with, but if we were to ever have to re-up that with a different company, which there's some frustration, just about everybody has the CAD system that we have in South Dakota, there's a lot of frustration with that system, but it's, it's there, it's so expensive to upgrade that it, they almost have us trapped, honestly. So that part of it, no, but for instance, dispatch, the increase in dispatch is, I think, 233% in equipment, and it's, it's $50,000, but it's for a recording system that records the dispatch calls, the sheriff's calls, the, the radio calls, all the radio traffic and dispatch. That's a 10, 12-year fix. So in another, after this year, in 10 to 12 years, we have to think about, is that going to be 50,000 again, or is it going to be 100,000? Because that stuff is not getting any cheaper. So, but there's, other than that, you know, the IT keeps our computers updated on a, on a scale system that they use, so I think Jake's already doing that kind of stuff. But other than cars and, and some, some, just strange outliers, there's probably nothing that, that isn't budgeted pretty consistently. Although there's going to be some concern with grant funding from the, from the government now, they've cut out HIDA, they've cut out, we haven't heard anything on our homeland security, and usually we get about 70 to 100,000 a year for that. So there's some stuff that we're just going to have to go without, probably.
Yeah, you know, and recently, we heard from some of the fire chiefs about the, you know, their radios and all of that. I mean, did we get them the training they need to get them figured out how to use the existing resources, or?
You know, I'll, I'll check with Todd, I know we talked about it, we have some issues with the, in T, but it, it, they have all the equipment, it's just, it's, it's really just committing to using the channel, there's, the training really is turning the knob on a, on a radio, and I haven't heard any more about it, so, but I'll double check on that. We have all the equipment, thank goodness, that prior to this, the government tightening the belt, we, we have all the upgraded radios, which was probably 200 or 300,000 just for the sheriff's office.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Bet.
Steve, on, with the population growing as it has, did you ever monitor, like, how much, how many more calls that you get, or the deputies get, you know, on a basis over a year-to-year situation?
And we do, we, that's easily monitored, but we, so, and I didn't bring that up here, but the calls for service last year were actually down from 2023 by about 3% or 4%. This year, they're running about 15% higher than last year. So it's, it's, a lot of it has to do with, like, 2023, we didn't have any snow, or 2024, we didn't have any snow. So 2024 was down from 2023. So the calls for service for crashes, you know, a bad snowstorm, we'll get 100 calls in one day. So we had hardly any of that this last year, which I think was a big driver of that. And then calls for service, for example, Harrisburg, the, the calls for service getting more serious, like the domestics, the, in other crimes, drug crimes, that kind of stuff, which take more time than a traffic stop. So in Harrisburg, the traffic stops are down, but the calls for service for, for other things were up, which means we need more people in Harrisburg, right? Because it's not, there's, there's less, there's more traffic, so there should be just as much, as many traffic stops, we just don't want people to do it. So that's, that's why we're, we're ticking up, and we're, we're one short this year, we're, last year, we were, I think, two short.
You know, you had an issue with all these rental facilities, rent places that were being broken into, and, you know, stuff like that. Have you seen a decrease in that kind of situation?
I, I think the deputies have a pretty good system in place, and we're working with the, you're talking storage units.
Yes.
So, so they put in kind of a system, and they're working with the storage unit owners, and for the most part, we have access to all their units, and, and they have a pretty good system. I think it's down, I think the word's out that we've, we've kind of got a better system, and we have, we have vehicles that aren't recognizable as police cars. So we've had some success in it, but it's, it's still an issue. We still have a lot of storage unit break-ins and, and, but we've, we've really developed a good partnership with most storage unit owners, we have access to their cameras, or they'll send us screenshots of cars that we're in at 3:00 in the morning, and so we have, we have a much better system. So we're, we're catching more of them, and I think that's either keeping it the same or, or driving it down.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, well, I got that, I got one more, I think.
Yeah.
So we talked about, and we've actually taught, hit on all of them, to be honest with you, we were asking for a CO for the jail, and that's for the new courthouse, it's going to take an extra person, and we're eliminating the security here, I believe, so that will be, and we won't need to add that person until July of next year to get them trained up for September when the building opens. So it's.
Is the equipment that we have here, is that going to transfer over there, do you think, or does that need to be updated or upgraded in any way, or?
I don't think there's any issue with the equipment we have here.
Okay, perfect.
Steve, is that, is, so when we, when the new courthouse goes operational over there, I mean, is it going to be the same setup where we're going to have just one person like we do here, subject to maybe having to rotate based upon schedules or something?
So, so the initial plan, and this is going to be kind of a test run, is two people at the front desk, as people come in, and one of those would be a rover, and then we have the, the control room, which there'll be one person in there, that's where we're adding the additional person, and the, the control room person will have contact with that second person at the front desk if there's an issue in a courtroom. Because currently, we staff most courtrooms for security, and that's going to be a little more difficult, but I think we can do a better job of it with cameras and communication, so that's, that's the goal. But there'll be two at the front desk, but the one will be responding to any issues that happen in the courthouse. Or if a judge has a case that they want a deputy in the courtroom at that time, or the state's attorney's office requests one, that person would be available for that.
Thank you.
So that's, that's our, our initial plan, see how that works.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the vehicle in the jail is to replace a van with a, which currently has 106,000 miles on it, so by this time next year, it'll have 130,000. And then we talked about the increase that the, the dispatch, the $50,000 for the recorder kind of offset, we, we have a $34,000 reduction in overtime, we've really managed to squeeze the overtime out of that, that department, so, and that's a one-time expense for 10 to 12 years.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right, any other questions from the commission? All right.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Any public input on the sheriff's presentation? All right, if not, we'll move on to our next item, our human resources budget. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioner Mindy. How are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Doing very well. All right, good. All right, just have a couple of things that I want to highlight, that I'm looking for some support in the budget for, really comes down to some things I want in the area of technology and support for our department and for the staff overall. The first is, we have a significant number of FMLAs happening on a rotating basis that take a lot of manual tracking and put us at a little bit of risk in terms of, you know, we're not medical experts, and we don't, we don't have the ability to make medical decisions, of course, and there's a lot of things that happen from a legal standpoint federally or locally that, you know, we have to keep track of. And so ADP, the system, of course, that we use for our human resources software, has a outsourcing called Talent Total, Total Absence Management, and so it's called TAM. And so they have a resource that is available that they would actually do all of the tracking, all of the hunting down, working with the medical providers, working with the employees to make sure from the time of their absence to the time that they return to work, that all of the paperwork is tracked down, and that everything is buttoned up and approving based on their medical expertise. Yeah, so that is a big piece of it. That actually has a cost of $4 per employee per month to run that program, as well as an initial implementation fee of $5,000. That is a agreement negotiated to come down from originally $6 a month, plus a $10,000 implementation. And then we also would get, if we use the system, we would get 12 months, three over a three-year period. So we get like three months in the first year, three months in the second year, and then the rest would be in the third year. That's one piece of it.
What's the total cost of that program, then?
So the total cost of that program would be about $9,000 a year, but 14,000 to begin with, with that implementation fee.
What's the problem with the way we're, I mean, has anything fallen through the cracks with the current way we're doing it?
There are some risks, and one being that we're, of course, not medical experts, and we're probably not the ones that should be approving whether somebody has a medical need to be out. There are some inabilities to keep up with, with compliance across the board, and, and we are just at max capacity with recruiting. I will just, you know, we have constant, I mean, we have a lot of openings right now, and it's an ongoing, pretty extensive process, and so it's, unfortunately, keeping up with the timing of what it takes to get FMLAs through is, is a little bit stretching our resources as well. So this would help ensure that we don't have to bring somebody on to manage this for us.
I want to say how much I appreciate you working on. I want to say how much I appreciate you working on the budget costs of using ADP as opposed to hiring a new FTE. The costs don't even compare. And especially with the expertise you get from ADP, I really appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. Yep, absolutely. That's what we're trying to do.
I just want to ask one more question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are, are you saying that we've been breaking the law or not following some rule?
I don't, I'm gonna, yeah, I don't think we want to get into that.
Well, okay. Let me restate it this way.
Thanks.
So I get that we're not medical experts, but most companies aren't, most counties aren't medical experts and most counties don't use this enhanced service. Do we need to be a medical expert in order to track FMLA?
I don't think we have to be a medical expert, but I do think, tracking FMLA is one thing. Making sure that we're approving the right FMLA reasons is, is another, right? And, and no, as far as I can tell, since I've been here, I haven't seen any laws broken, but I have seen things take a little longer than they should have. Response times not being what they need to be because it is very easy when you've got to hire and you're interviewing nine people in a day to have that fax come through that doesn't necessarily get addressed as quickly as it needs to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. No, great question, though. Good.
Thank you. Anything else for us, Carrie?
Yeah, the only other increase that's included in that, that kind of total bump in the fees and contracts piece is looking at using salary.com as opposed to doing a comprehensive salary study. That would be able to pull from all of the studies that are being done around us and give us access to being able to make hiring decisions or staffing decisions much more quickly and much more comprehensively without doing a full-blown study.
Because of cost comparison for that, there's quite a difference.
Yeah. So for one year, it'd be sixty-three hundred dollars a year. If we do a three-year contract, it'd be five thousand dollars a year. Kind of like to start with just one to make sure it does what we need it to do, as opposed to a comprehensive study being about thirty thousand a year.
Right.
And again, I want to say thank you for all the work that you've put into this. You have not been in this position very long, but you have taken this, the bull by the horns on many different issues. And especially it shows on your budget. So thank you so much.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right.
All right. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Carrie. Any public input on Carrie's presentation? All right. If not, then we have our Register of Deeds.
Good morning. Becky Vanderbruck, Register of Deeds. I'm here to have any questions about my budget. I mean, the main, the main difference in my budget is probably my M&amp;P fund and not my general budget. Of course, open any questions about anything in the budget?
Becky, thanks for putting this together. Don't really have any questions about your budget, but I do have a question about this M&amp;P fund.
Okay.
So just big picture question. So is it true that for every document you process, there's like a five-dollar M&amp;P fee, right?
Yes. So most documents are thirty dollars. If you change, they're all over ten, you know, majority thirty. But yes, so five dollars of that goes to M&amp;P, three stays here in our county for our use. And then two of each goes to SEDECO to hold, which is South Dakota County officials, to hold. And then that gets reimbursed to all the Register of Deeds in the state. And really helps the very small counties that, you know, didn't even have budget authority to buy new scanners or have their documents digitally done, you know, to, otherwise they were almost sticking with paper. And obviously helps us with big projects that come up, like the one that I'm preparing for.
Question I have then with that is, do we, have we ever needed to have that extra two dollars per document processed or per page or however it works? Or, I mean, you know, here's what people have said to me.
Mm-hmm.
Like, why is Lincoln County taxpayer money going to Jones County? No offense to Jones County. I use them all the time because they're one of the smallest counties, nine hundred people, no growth. May be very difficult for them to engage in technology investment. That's something for their county commissioners to figure out. But I, I mean, what I'm wondering is, is do we need those fees? Have you ever been like, oh, I don't have enough money in my budget? Or is the three dollars enough to cover everything?
Oh, I think the three dollars is enough to cover everything. Of course, I keep some things that are more like office supplies and stuff that we have to do by statute in the general fund. And I use a lot of our daily things, any labels, receipts for our computers, any, you know, we've paid for, I believe our desk that we got probably back in two thousand eighteen were all from that fund. We got a new server that I believe was like ten thousand dollars just last year that came out of that fund, you know, things for books. So I don't believe I've ever missed it in reality. Trying to think. It's probably usually around fifteen hundred to two thousand, depending on how busy of a month we've had, going to SEDECO. So.
And then.
Thank you.
Just for the public, M&amp;P, what does it stand for?
Modernization and preservation. So I use my shortened terms.
Nope, that's okay. I knew what you meant. I just wanted the public to know what it meant.
Ability to, mainly to digitize or, you know, like, you know, software for the records and then also to preserve them. So, you know, we use it on new books or new books to, to go have our old books be inside of it. Just anything that, mainly for the records of the Register of Deeds, because they're not going anywhere. They have to stay and be able to be researched by us or anyone that needs to, the title companies or lawyers or public. So yes, my project is to, pretty much in the most part, rescan a lot of our digital, sorry, not digital, our microfilm or our old books. Unfortunately, when I say rescan, some of them have been done, but not in the format that we're able to use for our software. In two thousand nineteen, we got DocPro, which is an amazing software that we pretty much put in a property and look up every single document that has been against that property. Since we have started indexing our documents in there and doing the old ones, our accuracy and efficiency has been so much better. It saves so much time, pretty much, even when I started back in two thousand fourteen, every request we had for a document was walking back to the vault, writing down multiple documents to see if it was the right one, coming back, looking up those documents one by one and seeing if it was the right one. Where now, it's probably done and, depending on how, you know, hard the search is, but you know, a lawyer asking for the last deed of record takes thirty seconds rather than five minutes, you know, and that's, that's a, you know, small. Unless, of course, they ask for a specific book and page, which has also increased with technology, with Beacon, with Director of Equalization and GIS and things like that. So mainly why we have to rescan them is that our DocPro does not format to color documents. So back before I started here, but had to come here, our old books, someone was pretty much coming, they were doing in-house and taking a picture of it. Those are, of course, are in color. So we are not able to add any information to those documents. So right now, pretty much, it's going into the old book, finding that book and page, looking up that book and page and seeing what that is saying. So we cannot add sellers, buy, you know, any parties, grant or grantees, legal descriptions. We cannot add that to any of those documents. Some of our microfilm is also in color. It doesn't look like it's in color because the documents were originally scanned in black and white, but then it was pretty much a picture taken of the document. So these are deeds even back in the eighties that we are not able to update into our system and to pretty much have digital books, which is definitely, you know, what we hope to accomplish. And then some of them are also just not very good scans. And that's where we are going through US imaging. They have worked with our county before. They take multiple kinds of scans of the document to get the best possible document. So I'm hoping once we do this with these documents, that we will never have to do them again, hopefully. Obviously, technology is always improving. But I would really, it really has upped our efficiency to be able to look up these documents right there on our computer. Of course, there's always the books for double checking. And we're obviously always updating and double checking things. But if we can, I mean, my ultimate goal is to have every single document in our office, in our program and index so that we can find it. You know, this would help genealogy research and of course, the research for title companies, lawyers, the public, surveyors, and even the ability to go online, which of course would stop any maybe requests that we have, other than people in the public that either don't want or don't have access to that online if we choose to go that route.
Well, I think you hit on something there. When you put this stuff indexable and searchable online, it reduces the, the pressure on needing to hire more people in the future, too. So.
Yes. Yep. Technology is definitely between e-recording and, yes, this new software has definitely lessened our footwork and, and just accuracy, which of course, we do not say, we cannot guarantee our search, but we try to do the best we can.
Just Becky, just to clarify one thing, because I want to make sure I heard this correctly. You said on that M&amp;P, we, depending upon the number of filings, we're sending out fifteen hundred to two K per month to SEDECO? Or is that per year or per month?
That's per month.
Okay.
I mean, I would, yeah, lately.
I know it fluctuates based on the number of filings. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Yep. And I'm sure the people that started it, Julie Risti and Minnie Ha Ha back then, and the people that created this amazing fund have a better argument than I do, but I just do know it, it seems small. Probably the check I receive from the state portion is probably three thousand dollars every year. That probably seems like a very small amount to, to our office, because that's what we put in our M&amp;P fund every month, if not more than that. You know, we're a county that only records fifteen documents a month, where yesterday we recorded ninety-one yesterday, which that's probably, that's small compared to during COVID. That's probably small compared to Minnie Ha Ha. That is amazing for them and the ability to get scanners, to update their books, to have software. That's money that they would not see other than their general fund and I believe our department is very important, but obviously, but not obviously, but, but not, not a lot, you know, not a, we don't have much.
Any other questions for Becky?
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Becky, you're always the one department that makes money.
We make money. We don't.
All right. Any public input on Becky's presentation? All right. If not, then we're going to move on to the open class raffle notice.
Paul Anderson, Lincoln County Commission Assistant.
Becky, your glasses are.
Well, oh, they're probably Dr. Snell's. I'll send him an email. These are, the next two items are bingo and raffle notices. The information provided is in the facts and vetting. Lincoln County Open Class will hold a raffle with, in conjunction with the 4H Achievement Days in July. And so for this first one, again, no actions required unless you object. I'll give you a second to glance over that and then just let me know if you object or we can do public input.
Anybody have any objection to the notice for number five on our agenda? All right. And then how about number six? You don't have any objections. Any public input on either items five or six? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to our opportunity for public comment for items not on our agenda. Anyone wishing to address the board now would be the time to do so. Just go ahead. Please state your name and where you live.
Sure. Chris David, Sioux Falls, Lincoln County. I was just wanting to speak today a little bit on, obviously, it's not, the budget's not being discussed today, but I read in the Dakota Scout that seven departments want new vehicles this cycle. The auditor's office and 4H program appear on the list for the first time with the auditor asking for fifty-five thousand dollars for its unit. And that's from the Dakota Scout. Wanted to just, kind of stuck with me, want versus need. And ironically, my husband's truck needed some repairs this last week. Anybody that has a truck or vehicles, no, that's not cheap. We didn't want to spend the money we needed to and as budget conscious as we are, we don't need a new truck. We crunched the numbers budget and financially conservative as we are, yes, the truck bill stunk, but it was the budget we worked with to fix the truck. That's what budget conscious people do. We didn't buy a new truck and bill our neighbors for it. That's what I feel like this car purchase does, about a fifty-five thousand dollar vehicle. So I also crunched some numbers. To pair is two hundred and one miles from right here. And so that would be a four hundred and two mile round trip. The state mileage is sixty-seven cents per mile, so that would be two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. At fifty-five thousand dollars for a vehicle divided by sixty-seven cents per mileage, allotment is eighty-two thousand miles to equal that fifty-five thousand dollar car. That doesn't include the cost of insurance, taxes, upkeep, et cetera. Eighty-two thousand miles. So forgive me, I don't know as far as the auditor's office. I understand the sheriff's department and I'm happy that I don't see him on some of the roads I'm on. But so what, I was curious to, what does Minnehaha County do? And my understanding is the commission office has one car that many people in the department share and it's an older Chevy SUV. I would say that from a resident standpoint, and everyone has heard about people tightening their belts and crazy taxes, even the suggestion of a vehicle seems to me tone deaf at the least, kind of plain obtuse and concerning of what financial philosophies and stewardship is of this department that uses our money. As nice as this budget looks, and according to auditor, we're not anywhere close to where we'll end up. I wanted to clarify and kind of end with this question. The budget should be set so the public knows and there's not surprises. If there's an adjustment, something else needs to give. I'd also say, too, just because there's money predicted to come in or saying it's in the budget doesn't mean we need to find a place to spend it. And I quote something else I read in the Dakota Scout from one of the commissioners, saying maybe we just return it to the taxpayer. So I just wanted to plant that seed. Saw that and felt it was really personal there as far as the want versus need and looking at a car and a, and a budget that when people are crying out for, for tax relief, it's kind of discerning enough to make me drive down here and just share that today. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment today?
Good morning, Commissioner. Chad Skiles, Canton. I'm here today speaking for myself as a citizen of Lincoln County and representing all organizations. Two weeks ago, the Lincoln County Commission held its first meeting. After what felt like years of citizens requesting a meeting, we moved to the evening. I applaud this commission for making that decision and allowing more citizens to attend in person and at least one, at at least one meeting a month and let their voices be heard. As a regular attendee at commission meetings, unfortunately, the fourth Tuesday of the month, meeting which you chose to move conflicts with another meeting that I have on the same night. The great part of that is that Lincoln County also streams and makes available the ability for citizens to watch the meeting at a later date and time. And that is exactly what I did a couple of days later. As I watched the meeting, regular agenda, item number nine, came up for discussion and action that dealt with the Lincoln County Sheriff to enter into a contract with the Harrisburg School District to move the. Harrisburg School District to move the sheriff's office, Harrisburg Substation, into the old elementary school located on Willow Street. Included in the discussion were comments from the sheriff that he was able to negotiate a reasonable contract and would make the cost work, make the cost work into the current budget and keep it nearly cost-neutral. It was at that time that the commissioner, sitting to my far left on the dais next to the commission clerk, spoke up and made an anti-Semitic comment regarding the cost negotiations. I will not repeat what he said, but anyone can go to the video of May 27th meeting at the two-hour and 16-minute mark and hear it for themselves. I frankly could not believe what I heard and went back and listened to it again. With all that is going on in this country and this world regarding anti-Semitism, to hear it spoken by a local elected county commissioner was uncalled for, unprofessional, and appalling. Words matter, and words can be hurtful and should be always chosen carefully. I will not go into any further discussion or details regarding this topic as now part of the public record that can be seen and heard by everyone. Commissioner, you owe an apology for that horrible comment. Ignorance, bias, or a slip of the tongue is no excuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Any other public comment today? All right, if not, then we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Do any commissioners have reports they'd like to make?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Last week, the State Association had a complete rundown on the proposed property tax relief, I think Senate Bill or the Governor's Bill 216. And we had Wendy Sumner, who is Director of Property Tax Division, go through there. I won't go into it, but we covered three different areas that this bill covers. One was the assessment side, talking about how that may or may not change. And the second part was of the bill to slowing the budget growth as much as you could. And the last one was targeted relief within some of the things, our new standards for property tax adjustments for senior citizens, for other people that have other areas that can qualify. So, anyway, it was a very detailed one. We talked extensively on what it would and would not do. The unfortunate side is that the majority of this legislation hits three counties primarily the hardest, and that is Minnehaha, Pennington, and Lincoln, and other counties as well because of the growth that we are not able to appreciate. So, anyway, it was a, it's a work in progress. I would remind everybody that on the 25th, no, the 23rd, that the Property Tax Subcommittee will be in Sioux Falls, taking testimony to, for anybody that wants to attend and talk about property taxes and what they're experiencing. So, that's good for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Anybody else have a report they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, thank you.
Go ahead.
So, last week, I had a chance to meet with Dave Myers out at the airport, and we took the tour. I took my son Zach along because he's going through the process of learning how to become a pilot right now, so that was fun for him. Dave gave a great tour. The T Airport is one of, for those who don't know, is one of the busiest in the state. In fact, busier in terms of takeoffs and landings than the Sioux Falls Airport. And so, we have quite an asset out there. And for those who don't know, the county, county property taxpayer money goes towards subsidizing and supporting that airport. And it looks like Dave and his team have been doing a lot of work with trying to put together a program where we could build some new hangars out there to meet the needs of the community in terms of space for airplanes and doing so in a way where the possibility exists that it could be revenue-neutral. And so, I look forward to seeing those plans here in the very near future because that would definitely help the county commission budget out, and that would help taxpayers out as well. And so, we had a great meeting, and I just want the public to know that there are some exciting things going on out at that airport out there, and a lot of people are putting a lot of work into it, and hopefully, we could get that moving here very quickly. Second thing I wanted to remind people of is we have our second county courthouse meeting tonight here in these commission chambers at 6:30, so 6:30 tonight. Commissioner Schmidt and myself are co-chairing that committee, and we are discussing what to do with the old courthouse here. As you may or may not know, the judiciary is going to vacate that space in September of, approximately in September of 2026. And so, we need to figure out as a county what we're going to do with that space moving forward. And so, tonight is important because it's an opportunity to hear from the public, and you can give public testimony, and you can tell us what you like, what you don't like, what your concerns are, what your hopes, what you think the opportunities are. Lastly, I want to just take a, this personal privilege to provide my condolences and my respect to the family of Casey Wilson. Casey was a longtime client of mine and a very good friend of mine, became friends with him over the years that grew out of my legal representation of him. Last Monday, Casey was killed in a very unfortunate car accident that happened on I-229, just north of Sioux Falls. And Casey had three kids, had his wife, Carleen. He was 50 years old. He had been, previously, he had been a professional bull rider and was involved in the rodeo. He was a farrier. He's probably one of the best farriers in the state. For those who don't know, that's a person who puts horseshoes on a, on a horse. And Casey was also very active and very involved in the shared parenting movement, and he led a movement, I would say, in terms of being able to ensure that parents are able to, both parents are able to spend more time with their kids through a lot of lobbying and a lot of public meetings and things like that. So, Casey touched a number of lives. His funeral was held this last Saturday. There were 1,300 people there up in Flandreau. So, Casey, you are gone, but not forgotten.
Thank you, Commissioner Ehrens.
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
One other announcement, I think, that we have John Peters, who will be retiring from our department. John has been a, an individual that has studied our land and has taught us more about maps and, you know, areas that no one else would ever get too excited about. I always think of LiDARs or some issues, but he would come up, and wetlands and all the surveys that he has done. And he has labored long and hard, drawn maps. And I think over time, John has taken this commission and this county in being able to utilize the technology that we have today for better planning. So, John, from the commission's side, thank you for your service. We wish you nothing but a happy retirement and some enjoy some time with your family. But thank you for what you've done for Lincoln County.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Any other reports?
I have something to say when you're, when you're done here.
If you have a report to make, you can certainly do so.
No, it's just the fact of what was brought up here.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was, I was narrowed out. Evidently, I said something wrong. And, and I'm supposed to apologize, which I won't. I don't apologize for anything I say. I say what I say and I mean what I mean, and if somebody takes offense to that, they could actually give it in writing what I did. After that, I have no clue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no, no more commissioner reports or comment, Drew, do we need executive session?
Yes, we do. 125, 2 sub 3.
All right, can I get a motion under 125, 2 sub 3?
Move for executive session.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Second, Otten. I have a motion in a second to come out of executive session. Alicia, will you, well, we'll just, yeah, Alicia, call the roll, sorry.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries.
Madam Chair, motion do adjourn.
Second, Otten. Got a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?